Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled Board of Select meeting tonight being held here at the Douglas Library at Hebron in the community room, tonight, Thursday, October 3rd, 2019. I ask that we please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to ask my fellow select people if it would be okay if after public comment we remove up item A, 7A, the Chatham Health District since our director is here. Anybody have a problem with that?
Okay.
Okay, so our next section is our public comment section. This is reserved for those people who wish, the attendees who wish to briefly address the Board of Selectmen. We ask that comments be limited to three minutes or less. People wishing to address the Board regarding agenda items to try and verify now whether or not to speak at this time or during section of the agenda when we talk about that item. If you were willing to speak, please name and address, please. Yes, sir.
David Morrison, Black Monroe, Hebron, Connecticut, USA. Have to be clear these days.
Sorry, could be.
I am a citizen. I will make that very clear. Under 7B, capital improvement, I'd like to reserve my comments for that time if it's okay with you, and I'll do my best to keep it under three minutes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Now, like, there's 62 over, bro.
Thank you. Okay.
Your answer.
Yeah?
Susan Porter Martinburg. Oh, sorry, Susan Porter Martinburg. The same.
Okay. Yes.
Period Foot, 1126 Sterling Street. I just want to make two sentences regarding CIP and can talk more later, too, if that's an honor. I was very concerned when I read on the agenda about the proposed revision to the CIP committee. I was on, I was a member of the committee this past year, and I found it to be a valuable experience. It's a grouping of individuals from various departments, commissions, committees, representing the same. The group did a wonderful job spending many hours balancing the needs and requests of all of those different departments and commissions, and I think that would be lost if it were dissolved. That's my first comment. And my second one is that now that we're doing, we are Hebron, and we're trying to involve more people in the town activities, if we dissolve such as the CIP, we're doing away with one more opportunity for people to serve. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Ready?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Chairman, change of agenda. Wes, we have Mr. Russell Melman, Health Director for the Chatham Health District. We had talked that we would have the Chatham Health District come in and speak to the Board and to the public through the camera to, we initiate what they do in service, make a vibe for the community. So with that, Russ, come on up and give me the floor.
All right, well, thanks for inviting me. Appreciate that. I just want to say first, before I ramble on about all the great things the Chatham Health District does, that, you know, I appreciate your appointment, Andy, to my Board. I've only been working for Chatham Health District for five months, but Andy's institutional knowledge of the district operations, just being new, has been really helpful, his understanding of municipal history, not just Hebron, but other municipalities that we serve, the region's cultural geography, his family ties, his connections to the community, which has really been a tremendous resource to me. So, Andy, I appreciate your service on the Board, and I thank you for appointing Andy to my Board. In terms of the services the Chatham Health District provides, they fall under several categories. One would be our statutory or regulatory functions. Another would be communicable disease prevention and surveillance. Another would be community health and education, and the last would be emergency preparedness. And I'll give you a list of some items that we could under each of those. Probably what we're best known for is our statutory or regulatory services. Those are principally environmental health services. Things like food service, plan reviews and inspections for all restaurants, daycare inspections to make sure they're safe, salon inspections, the same, pool inspections, campground inspections, and a whole range of services for subsurface sewage disposals. If you're going to do anything with your property, you've got a septic system, or you're putting in a new septic system, you know, we do all the reviews and make sure that what you're doing on your property is not going to affect your septic system. We also engage in a number of environmental investigations, or alcohol environmental investigations, anytime there are discharges of pollution suspected, waterways and wells and things like that. We investigate well contamination, chemical contamination of well water. We provide a service in which we can go investigate contamination, provide sample collection for residents, send them to a laboratory and test their blood contamination suspected from things like spills. When there's a lead poisoning child, we do a full investigation. We'll go into a home and we'll test every surface, sill, wall, floor, texture for lead. We'll interview the family, really try to pinpoint the source of lead poisoning for the children.
How does that communication work, Russ? How does it come down through to you?
Sure, so, well, it's actually required that children, I believe, under three are supposed to be tested by their pediatrician twice for lead. Typically, it happens once, and when there's nothing, physicians don't often do it a second time, but they're actually a part, do it twice. So when there's a lead poisoning that's down through a capillary, like a heel stick or finger stick, that goes into a state database, and that comes to us. And that triggers, depending on the level, a whole range of interventions that we have to take, from just a basic interview to, like I said, a full investigation because of the home. It is fairly intensive. So that's, it's triggered by the state telling us, we got a hit from a physician, that there's a lead poisoning. So that's, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, the number of surveillance systems, like lead poisoning surveillance, there's also a surveillance system for communicable disease, if somebody has a flu-borne disease or a vector-borne disease like Triple E or a number of other diseases, there's surveillance systems for that. They get hits and we're notified. And they're multi-step. We can get a fax, we can get a call, we can get the database from the state, so there are a number of ways we can do it.
And you cover how many towns in our area?
Six towns. Hebron, Marlboro, Colchester, Portland, East Hampton, East Hampton. We do a lot of complaint investigations for public, called Public Health nuisances. Basically, somebody called and says, you know, the name of my neighbor's pool is green, they're not doing any thought of breeding mosquitoes. Or, there's a foul smell coming from my neighbor's house, you know, I want you to necessarily go out and do our best to figure out if there is actually a violation of the Public Health Code, if there's a violation of law. And if there is, then we'll, the homeowners are to obey those conditions. We get a lot of phones, a lot of complaints and issues. There are probably some other environmental things that we do. I might be every single thing, I'm missing something for sure. In terms of communicable disease prevention, whenever there's a case of tuberculosis, I know it sounds like an old-world disease, but we do get cases every year, we'll do contact tracing investigations. It's a very intensive process. Somebody has TB, we have to go and interview them, their family, find out everywhere they were for months before they started getting sick. Contact all those folks, get them all tested for tuberculosis, and manage their treatment. In some cases, it's going to their home every day, watching them take their pills for nine months to make sure they're treated with tuberculosis. So that's probably the most intensive communicable disease type of work that we do. It's rare when it happens, it's a lot of work. Foodborne disease outbreak investigations, those happen more often than you might think. You know, we're statutory required to keep those confidential, but they happen every year a number of times, either at a restaurant or a long-term care facility. We will have folks who, a number of people who get sick from eating handmade food, we are doing those investigations and identify the source and basically make sure that that's not causing a big disease. We have a tick testing service, so we partner with Connecticut Anticulture Experiment Station. If you or any resident of Hebron or any of our towns is getting a tick, pull that tick off, you can bring it to any one of our offices in the town hall, we have a sanitarian there. We'll get that tested for three different infectious agents, Lyme disease, of course, tuberculosis, choliosis, based on the results. Those results can come back anywhere in just a few days. If the lab's very busy, likely they'll be here soon, and we counsel residents on community health reports, you know, that means this is what we recommend you do based on the results. I'd say that service is underutilized. I don't see a lot, we don't get a ton of those ticks. We get some, some people bring it every year, and they're kind of free from flyers. You know, they know about the service, they've been every year, they're bringing ticks in, and we talk to the same people often. I wish more people would use that service. I think it's a great service, so hopefully people watch and...
And prior to Russell's opinion, we did a tolling at the Hebron School last year. Don didn't know, it was well received.
Yeah, actually, I think it was in 2017, actually, maybe two years ago. And after that program, suddenly there was a huge spike in use in Hebron, but it's since gone back down. So I'm actually working with a couple of our sanitarians, and I help educate for awareness campaign about that service, because I just didn't, it's underutilized, it's a free service, anyone can use it. It's consuming my personal time for a few weeks now with Triple E. And he's, I mean, all municipal officials, I believe, in the area have been dealing with this, from schools to park and rec directors. So it's been a banner year for Triple E, even though we've only had four human cases, really that's a banner year. A lot of mosquitoes test positive, horses test positive. So whenever something like that comes, comes up, I'm engaging conversations with park and rec directors, schools, other municipal officials to interpret the guidance that comes out from Chatham Health District, which sounds very general and vague, you know, curtail activities from dusk till dawn. What does that mean? In what kind of settings are we talking about? What's the risk? So, so I sort of help guide officials through that process, what they should do as a town to reduce the risk of mosquito-borne diseases. In the summer months, we do recreational bathing water monitoring program. We test for E coli in all the public bathing areas in Hebron, it's two sites, I'm, like, we're testing for. Every week, we go out there, we take a sample of the water, we bring it to the state lab, and we test it for contamination for E coli. Occasionally, we'll get a hit, and we'll see elevated levels of E coli, we'll retest, and if it's positive again, we'll close the beach, continue testing until it's negative. A lot of times that happens, there'll be a rainfall, wash, you know, stuff into the lake, goose poop is very, very common, and, and that's dangerous, you know, when there's, yeah, goose poop. You don't want to swim in those goose poop in the water, as we say, so, reach good hands. Community health, we have three live well programs that we offer on a rotating basis in each of our towns. A chronic disease self-management program, a diabetes self-management program, and a chronic pain self-management program that we just started this year. And those are fairly intensive, six-week programs where we take people through a process of understanding the disease, how to better manage it, and something home, with the goal of improving their well-being. That's an evidence-based program, we've been doing it for a number of years, and it's fairly successful and fairly popular. We keep getting people back. Some people come back through a second time, a third time we do it, but we work continually getting new, new people, because unfortunately, new cases of diabetes and other chronic diseases are fairly common, so. Every year, like, starting right now, we start doing flu vaccine lifts, you know, the senior centers, sometimes schools, daycares, and we'll vaccinate anybody who wants to get vaccinated. So actually, starting next week is our first, and we'll go all the way through October into November. Usually, after around January 1st, we're stuck in calls from panicked parents whose kids are going to daycare, and they didn't know they had to get the vaccine, and they got a notice from their daycare father saying, your child can't come without the vaccine. So, you know, we typically have a little stash waiting for those folks, because we always know they're coming. This year, we tried the Solarware. Did you even see the Solarware program we had? It was at Gillian School for the summer rec camp program. It's an eight-foot-tall sign, solar-powered, it measures the UV rays and the harmfulness of the UV rays, and gives a digital readout, basically says, this is how long you can be in the sun right now based on this reading before visible sun damage occurs. Yes, great, and it also comes with a little physical sunblock dispenser, the bottom, physical meaning, you know, not behind, it's a firecracker disruptor, it's the zinc oxide, the tanning dioxide, variety of the parents typically like nowadays, because it's less harmful to the kids. So we had that at Gillian School. There was some problem with, with parts. It was, it was delayed, it was supposed to be rolled out in May, and it wasn't rolled out for a couple of months after that, because it's a startup company, putting these together, it problems with the supply chain, so a little bit of a mess in this first year, next year. They didn't charge us, and next year, we're hoping that those things can be ironed out. We're active participants on the A H M Youth and Family Services Check Coalition, that's Community Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, but they run... In terms of education and training, we go to health and safety fairs, anybody who's doing health and safety fair a lot of times at the schools, sometimes it's the fire departments who do that health and safety fair. We'll go, we'll stand up with them, we'll talk to residents, we'll provide educational materials, sort of the standard, I'd say, 1990s version of public health for human people, handbooks and stuff. We still do a little bit of that. We'll do targeted prevention, targeted presentations about tick-borne diseases, anybody who wants a presentation, whether it's a school, or anybody, if we can do it, tick-borne disease is a popular one, we'll go and do those presentations for specific groups, targeted groups. We just started a Serve Safe program for food service professionals. Serve Safe is a national brand that provides food safety training to people who work in restaurants. We actually just launched that this year, in November will be our first class, so that every, every restaurant is required by law to have a person on staff all the time who has been trained this way. So oftentimes, our restaurant, our restaurants, they, you know, have a hard time finding somebody who's got that, they have staff turnover, somebody leaves, they have the certificate, they have to find somebody else. So we decided, hey, let's start offering that program so that they can, and us, they won't be trained. Emergency preparedness probably goes unseen by most folks. We plan for two major sort of catastrophic events. One is a pandemic, so we plan to stand up mass vaccination, we plan to, so if it's a pandemic, we have plans, we drill those plans, we assess those plans, that we can vaccinate entire populations since we were in other towns in short order. Scary scenario, but it's likely to happen at some point. And the other thing is medical countermeasures. This was born out of the 2001 anthrax scare, and shortly after September 11th, there was mail, people got anthrax mail. Ever since then, CDC requires all basically of health departments to plan for what happens if somebody gets in a plane, for example, and sprays the anthrax over them. So how do we get pills into people in 48 hours? So we plan for that, we drill for that, whatever happens, but... That's it, I'll stop talking. That's, that's Chatham Health District in a nutshell. I'll entertain any kind of questions.
Could you or Russ or Tag team give people that don't really have any background and want Chatham Health and state statutes and why we partner?
Sure. So, I don't know how many years ago, but Robert, I believe, was the town manager and a bunch of other managers, first elected some of the towns that now form the Chatham Health, so they've got together and formed a health district, and the towns belong to it versus everybody having their own sanitarian. Along with having a sanitarian, you had to have...
Director Health.
Director Health, which we, at the time, employed a local doctor, had a very limited amount of money, and that kind of relationship was starting to, you know, end sunset. So when doing that, I think, looking to the future and the cost, it would, it would be true of municipality to have a staffer which would be a licensed sanitarian, and then also a health director. You're not going to find anybody out there, sanitarian anywhere between 70 and 200, and a doctor, I don't think you're going to find anybody out there for $30,000, back in the day, I think you would have. Big number. So at that time, the towns got together, and this was a regional approach to that situation and to meet that statute requirement, and that's how the Chatham Health District was formed. So what they do is, they work in the land use departments of all the towns, you submit plans, they review them for well locations, setback sewer, a lot of those types of things, miss failures, repairs, things of that nature. So it's been working very well. Some towns have, you know, are busier than others, there's been some growing pains, but overall, it's been in existence for a while, and I think we're, we have our, our challenges like many other districts do, because there's not a lot of kids going to or graduating from, ready to go into the field as a certified. The way the state has it set up now, it's very difficult to get somebody to certify, so it's kind of been a poaching type of process for stealing people in each district and going a little bit of back and forth. So that's a challenge in itself, and we're gonna, we're gonna see some of that challenge very soon again, so.
Yeah, it's been, I'd say that we've got, there are a few forces at work, some of which we maybe, some of ours we can't, so one thing is, we've got an aging workforce, and we've got a young workforce graduating from colleges that are essentially leaving Connecticut, not coming into Connecticut. So we've got a little bit of a brain drain problem, I don't think at the local level we can do much about in terms of developing our own workforce. So we've got some aging sanitarians, like that all over the state, they're retiring, so what we're seeing is, yeah, as I said, the department's poaching sanitarians from others, that puts upward pressure on salaries, so you're starting to see salaries go up. I'm hoping that the salaries have gotten to the point where it'll stabilize, and we'll really start drawing young people into workforce, like any other industry, you know, the salaries get attractive enough to say, oh, well, consider being, calling it out, being a sanitarian. I'm hoping that we're there. We'll find out, we just hired a young person out of college, that's good news, but, you know, she's unskilled, untrained, we've got to train her. It'll take probably a year before she's ready to do a lot of, any of the statutory requirements on her own, and then probably two years before she's kind of doing everything that a sanitarian can do. So it's a process, but, but the good news is, when you've got a district, it's not like a sanitarian leaves from the town, and then what do you do? Then you've got nobody. So, you know, our plan for when we have people retire or leave is, you know, instead of having six sanitarians, we get five, and you kind of square around, you hire somebody else, we coach them up, essentially. So I think it works, but it does put a strain on the workforce, certainly. Don Mitchell, the foreign director, he's retiring at the end of this month, so we'll go from having six staff to having five, and then, like I said, we pitch in around, and, and we'll put some pressure on the staff while we hire replacements, so.
One of the questions that I have, a lot of the courses that you were talking about, you never seem to see that information. The past director was saying, well, I'm honestly, I'm putting it in the stamp in the section of, you know, where the risk, that does not do Hebron any good. Hebron basically means Hebron, so I'm hoping you're going to put a lot of these things in the Hebron section so that our taxpayers, our people, know that's actually happening.
Yeah, and I think also we can, we can amplify each other's social media accounts, our websites, so, so we're starting to do a little bit more of that, I don't think it was done enough, that's for sure.
And you can contest this, what I did is have me and my superintendent, so we got all email addresses from the schools, regional schools, local schools, their social media pages, our social media pages, we sent out updates on Triple E, that, that went to everybody as of today, so I was meeting with the, the superintendent, we shared the information, and she actually got information this morning and this afternoon with Chatham Health, and that's now, on their blast, our blast, and people's community page, I blast it, and she's now doing it herself.
Yeah, she is, and, and also, we do, you know, sometimes, especially when we're doing things like the chronic disease self-management program, possibly blood pressure clinics, not in Hebron, because the Hebron Senior Center has it, somebody else goes after that. The actual agency that will partner with the library or the senior center will put it out in their communications to the people who are usually getting their newsletters and things like that. So we're, we're working on sort of broadening our communication plans so more people see those things, but we do get a fairly good attendance, so I think enough people are seeing. Those programs that I mentioned, like the chronic disease self-management, really, we cap that at 16, even, we can't do more. Oftentimes, we'll get 12, 13, 14. So we do seem to get a fair number of people coming to us.
So we'll let them know about the newspaper as well, I think, that under advisement, if they're posting stuff in East Hampton.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to post anything in East Hampton, in East Hampton, actually, the program's happening in Hebron. Like I said, you know, we rotate, but it doesn't matter, you know, if we're doing the program in East Hampton, Hebron residents can still come in. So if we, you know, post two other things, if we're doing the program in East Hampton, we can still post in Hebron and say, this is happening in East Hampton Live.
Well, this is, this is what we would say, is that, you know, people of Hebron, and I, I just go to everybody else, I read Hebron.
Yeah.
I quickly browse over Colchester, New York towns, because I read Hebron.
I do, I'm a resident of Colchester, and I was doing the exact same thing until I became the health director here, and now I read it all, but I do the same thing.
Yes.
You know, ah, it's Hebron, ah, it's East Hampton, whatever. I, I get that, it doesn't make sense, because we're a regional health department. It's, you know, if we're offering a particular course in one of our towns, it doesn't mean that people from all the towns can't come here. We're all relatively close, and it's not, not only did they get from here, to East Hampton Live, you know, 15 minutes.
Yes.
Look, that's what you said, that one, because that program about the ticks two years ago, we found out about it afterwards, because it was only in the East Hampton section, not now, a whole bunch of us wanted to go.
So the program for the Hebron schools, not ticks, was in the East Hampton section?
It was, and I'm part of the referees, remember that one?
Yeah, I think Don was doing, driving through the school, I think they reached out to us, or somehow, I think we got policies.
Well, the parents probably got it, and they're glad, you know, we did.
Oh, or not, I think we did, that's a shame.
So we did.
Do you want to say anything else on Triple E says, is really affecting a lot of towns' sports operations and apparently now Halloween potential operations?
Yeah, so what I'll say about Triple E is that the, the risk of a person getting Triple E, especially now, is fairly low. School weather, mosquito population turn decline, but the consequences are extremely high. So when you have this situation, there are conservative measures you can take, or aggressive measures you can take, and not conservative measures. And the guidance suggests that curtailing activities from dusk till dawn is something you should consider. Canceling events, especially when you have a lot of people coming, is something that a lot of towns have been doing, and that is in keeping with the guidance. This late in the season, you can consider other measures. For example, as mosquito populations begin to retreat into their core habitat of wooded wetland areas as opposed to sort of in every cup and hire and everything out there in the middle of the field, avoiding those particular areas is one thing you can do. So, so I know with regards to the chicken drum.
Drum tree, drum tree.
You know, it's at the fairgrounds, right? They are wooded, wet areas that might be considered areas of high risk still particularly. I would certainly advise people to avoid those areas, so if there are activities planned for those, or even near those, I would avoid that. Out in the middle of the field in a parking lot, if you're not near a wet wooded area, the risk is fairly low. Personal protective measures might be something you could advise people, it's cool now, wearing long sleeves, wearing long pants, putting insect repellent on, exposed skin, that's something you could do, you can even provide insect repellent to people at these kinds of events. But again, curtailing activities from dusk till dawn until there's a hard frost is aggressive, but it's still in keeping with the guidance. So you can't go wrong with keeping people safe, but at the same time, as the season winds down, you can start to consider, well, is this aggressive, unnecessarily aggressive? And, you know, we'll talk to you, anybody else, see Andy, have any regular contact with the disgusting. You know, there's no hard and fast rule here about when there's a Triple E mosquito in Colchester, if somebody gets sick, cancel everything until there's a hard frost, and say, that's something we can consider doing, it's certainly going to keep people safe when you do that, but again, there are health benefits to being active and outdoors and doing fun things. So there's always a balance, and it's about your comfort level with the level of risk being low but not zero, and saying, I think this is the best for residents of Hebron. But I will say, it's an unprecedented year, and so it is a very scary disease. When people get it, you know, 30% die, 36% die, and most of the rest of the people, if they recover, have lifelong and severe neurological problems. This is very scary. If I were to say to you, rabies was transmitted by mosquitoes. Everybody knows rabies, right? Doesn't suffer from the sort of PR problem that I think Triple E does. Rabies, probably wouldn't see anybody outside after five, if rabies was transmitted by mosquitoes. This is kind of right along there, you know, not everybody dies from rabies, not everybody dies from Triple E, but it's a very severe disease, so when you have the consequences this high, taking conservative measures should be considered. Is that vague enough?
Yeah. We have a question for you.
No, I just wanted to make a comment, I met Russell in August, that's working on the lead project down at the elementary school. He's very flexible, as is everyone in the department there. I gave him a document of 853 pages and asked him to sign it, and... eight hundred and fifty-three pages and asked him to sign it, and.
He gave me like six hours.
Yeah, but he, he reviewed it, he put some notes on it when he did sign it, and the state looked at those notes, and they are going forward with changing the requirements. They're asking him to just blanketly sign everything having to do with.
This is comprised of every health regulation the state of Connecticut, something like that, and said, well, this narrowly fits this part of the code that we enforce the law of our department.
But the message there is that, that could have stopped our whole project, and Russell figured a way to, to move around that and keep this on schedule, so thank you very much.
Scriveling personal notes on forms, sometimes it works.
Thank you.
So about mosquitoes now, to kind of eat, eat, I grew up learning something else about that, yes, invernal pools in the spring were, you know, our toads, frogs, and tadpoles, but also could be a mosquito thing. Having been on planning a zoning, there's a lot of properties in town that have three or four acres that could contain this. One thing that's not being written, it's dawn and dusk, use D if your child is, doctor says it's okay, and yourself. One thing that I learned and I remembered is, look through your own yard for old hubcaps, pots, pans, buckets, anything that collects water, especially when the high season begins coming in the next year. I read nothing about this, it's dawn to dusk, all the details should be given to people, and I don't read that, all I hear is dawn to dusk, and then use D to long sleeves and trousers. I, I feel that the city water is something in one's own yard, that everyone in the town can control, but we must stress simple things like that, because, I, I mean, since I grew up in the nineteen forties, that was something they stressed then, and we didn't worry about other than getting a darn mosquito bite. And, and I'm concerned, because that's the kind of simple information, that in our own yards, we can control, and it might give someone's child a little job to do every evening after the rain, to make sure nothing in the yard is collecting water, which is a breeding place for that little critter that could bite you.
Yeah, so at this point in the season, the guidance isn't talking about that, because mosquito breeding isn't happening in those kind of places. But if you look at our, the Chatham Health District release from mid-September, or maybe even mid-August, when a horse was found positive in Colchester, included all those recommendations, empty child play toys, buckets, cans.
But I haven't read it here, anyway.
Well, now, that's not really part of the guidance, but, but if you look back at the guidance, so Triple E, the, the release didn't go out since probably late July, when they started finding mosquito pools tests positive around the state. It was in those early, in those early months, when it was mosquito breeding season, that was in the guidance, it was in our guidance, it was in the state's guidance, now, not really part of it anymore.
It shouldn't be year-round, people are slow learners today, really, it's not a joke.
Yeah, I know, I, I get it.
I mean, it's funny, I'm trying to keep people from getting sick.
I'm try, I'm, I'm a hundred percent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, appreciate it. I'm always available, if you need all.
Okay.
Yeah, nice to meet you too.
Okay. Back on the agenda, the group to know?
Yes. So, I'm gonna be presenting on the group to know Kevin Kelly's assets, Kevin Kelly is our public works director, but in this instance, he would have been speaking in regards to the disease of dead trees throughout Hebron, the state roads, and town properties and townways away. So I'll summarize, but I passed out a memo from Mr. Kelly explaining the situation. So what we have in a nutshell is, Hebron has a large, we did an inventory a couple years ago, I mean, Hebron has a large inventory of ash trees, along with oaks, whatever else. So through the last couple of years, we've had the Emerald Ash War, we've had signs, or started to see signs of a long-term drought, and then also gypsy moss on the oak trees, so that was kind of a triple win. And what that, what that did is, it's got these trees in the rights of way in on town property, decaying and dying, causing a liability. This is unprecedented, and Kevin, along with the equipment of the public worst department, is doing as much as they can, and he spells out numbers of trees that they have removed along the towns' roadways and property, and he's gotten some assistance from EverSource whenever he can. What the fear is, is we're having more trees die or be diseased in the rights of way that we can handle, or EverSource can come out and help us with. And then, quite frankly, there's trees that are taller or involved in the power lines that we're just not capable of doing ourselves. So in a nutshell, what that's doing is, it's putting a strain on the public worst department's budget, because it's a banner year, we're gonna see a couple more years of this type of situation, so we're having to bring in contractors more than we normally would, and trees are dying at a rate that we really can't keep up. We're, I think, more proactive than the surrounding towns around us that don't have the equipment that we have to do, and some of this is all from our own. But we have some rather large trees that have been brought to some of the select's attention, my attention, letters written, naming us, putting us on notice that, you know, these trees are hazardous, and they're now a liability, we've been notified. Kevin has been trying to be resourceful, waiting for EverSource, I got involved this week, knowing it was an issue, there was a young lady that was killed on a motorcycle, and it was in the ants field, unfortunate. So the states, as you can see, anybody traveled through sixty-six, the state's doing the best that can, even they can't keep up with the trees, the way they're dying. EverSource has committed to several trees within the town of Hebron, but the, the date to get that done is like the first of the year. And the issue is, is we've been notified the trees are in the towns right away, so essentially, we own it, so the liability is ours. Now that we have the deadline of January first, to take that much time to get some of these hazardous trees down, I think we're gonna have to start stepping up, raising contractors in ourselves and pay them to have these trees taken out, so we don't have that liability. There's several in town, they're depicted in memo that we put out. Kevin is the president of Tree Wardens Association, or Tree Care Association, or, he's in both, he's president of one, and past president of the other. Pira's gonna have a hearing, I spoke to higher-ups in EverSource yesterday, this woman's, and her boss, and her boss's boss, and I said, Kevin's claiming you guys committed, but he said, we've probably done more trees in Hebron than most of the surrounding towns, just trying to help out, because you have seen have more ash trees in other areas, but we can only do so much with the resources we have. So the next plan is, is contacted them, we're sending them a letter, as you can see, we're sending them another letter to Pira, we're getting involved with costs, we're gonna go up there and we're gonna testify, and we're gonna try to get the legislators to put some pressure, to put more money into the treatment, whether for EverSource or try to help the towns and cities out, but this, this problem is very expensive. And the issue is, if we don't do anything, we have the liability, it can be really expensive, and unfortunate situation could occur, so. I think we're being proactive, and we're probably doing better than some of the surrounding towns that don't have to pay for it, but still, all it takes is one incident, and then we've got a big amount. So I know Dan had reached out to me and asked me to speak on this topic, Kevin had just gotten back from Florida, so he's got the memo done for me, the prior commitment tonight, probably working for Claire on WPCA, so I said I'd fill it, and I'm not making a comment tonight, so.
I thank you, yeah, it's, I mean, it's a definite issue, you know, and basically, we're fleet the talent, bearing the brunt of the financial costs through ourselves, through the town, if there's no outside monies or.
It's unfortunate, because on a normal, on a normal day, when the tree's healthy, it's part the property owners, it's part the towns, because it's in the right of it, but when the tree's dead, oh, it's the town's liability, the town's issue, and there's no recourse to go back to the property and say, I mean, this, this is our problem, we need to both take care of it, it falls upon the town, and the town has the liability, because that's the way it's set up, if it's in the town right of way, it's considered a town tree. Very expensive.
With my hats off, I, you know, I, I feel Kevin and his crew are doing what they can, I know they've also had outside people doing what they can, the wiring for electrical issues is a whole other thing, that's an EverSource problem. You know, but if we were to have any kind of another one of these October snowstorms or a night storm, it's gonna be dangerous throughout townways, Hebron, but literally just take it with sixty-six, you know, there are just, you know, tree after tree, that eventually may look like that.
Well, there's, I'm glad you brought that up, here's, I want the public to know, there's two issues, there's oaks that are dying from the gypsy moss and the drought, or a couple years of both, and then you have the ash trees. The problem with the ash tree is it dies in place, and it breaks and falls, and just dries off, and when you can have a mass limb, or a big piece of the trunk just break and come down, they die in place, where oaks die slow, they're strong, even as they're dying and don't bear leaves, you know, the trunk and the limbs normally have some integrity where the way the ash tree is dying, the, the water stops going up to feed the tree, give it the strength that it turns into like paper, and it just, just integrates, so even when you're taking them down, you have to be careful to make sure how much integrity the tree has that you're working on, so. If you, what a good, good example would be is when you're driving down the road, when it rains like it is tonight, and you see those trees, they'll be yellow, that means they're dead, the trunk will be yellow, and you'll say, oh, that tree's gotta be removed. It'll, it'll just die in place, instead of, like an oak, can stand for three, four years probably, maintain its limbs, and it's so much petrifying, where, you know, ash trees don't do that.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to add, bud? Okay, moving on.
All right. Appointments and resignations. So the first appointment that we have under item five is for a Parks and Recreation Commission alternate appointment, attaches a letter from Kimberly Mazesko, an affiliated, representing her interest in being appointed as an alternate member to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And we are honored to have Kimberly in our presence here tonight. Would you like to give us just a quick bio on why you want to apply, or?
Oh, sure.
About who's position?
Sure, please.
It's countable.
All right, great. All right, well, thank you all for having me and come to your meeting, I appreciate that. I live on 127 Crunchy Lane in Hebron, been here for two years, moved here with my two small children, who go to Gilead, one is three and one is four, so I'm very busy, but we spend a lot of our time outside, playing on all the playgrounds and the trails, we love Hebron, it's a very nice town. My mother also, who's in her seventies, lives here, and I lived here when I was through my childhood as well. So I've seen all of the advancements that, improvements that the Parks and Rec has made, in fact, I think it was the Parks and Rec building that my sister had worked in, it was, used to be a chicken farm, and she, I would pick her up, and she would get the eggs, I don't know if anybody remembers that, but.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, so she had a job and I did not, but she would, I'd pick her up, because I could drive, I was a little older, but boy, she smelled. So I'm glad that the Parks and Rec smells a lot better there, but it's beautiful, it's beautiful facilities, nice fields, drive-through, even ramp, it's, it's just gorgeous, and it's, it's head and shoulders over what it was years ago. So I know that there's a lot more on the agenda to have, the Parks and Rec are working on as well, making the town a lot better place, and keeping competitive with the other towns, if not ahead of the other towns, so wanted to just partner with that, and my neighbors, and meet other folks, and just to be part of the, the positive improvement.
Very good.
Thank you. So I ask for your approval, I guess.
Sure.
Actually, Kimberly, Parks and Rec is where I started.
Oh, okay.
About a quarter century plus ago, so I welcome you, I hope you enjoy. I'm gonna move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Kimberly Mazesko. Mazesko, is that right? Okay. Kimberly Mazesko as an alternate member of Parks and Rec Commission for a term to run until December of 2020.
Hearing the motion, any further comment? All in favor, say that you're saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, so be it. Congratulations, thank you. You'll have to go and see Carla, I believe, to get sworn in.
Okay.
Town clerk.
Yeah, I know who part of this.
Okay, you're welcome.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you, I've been happy myself, though.
No, not a problem at all.
My kids are awake. So, thank you very much.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, under item five, this would be B, ATS, Hebron Elementary School Drinking Water Redemption Building Committee resignation.
Not just the motion.
There you go.
Motion that the Hebron Board of Selectmen accept the resignation of Kathy Williams from the Hebron Elementary School Water Remediation Building Committee with regret, and thanks for the service.
Okay, hearing the motion, any further discussion? All in favor, say that you're saying aye. Aye. Opposed, extensions, so be it. Okay.
Very good. Also, on the same item five, under C, ATS, Hebron Elementary School Drinking Water Redemption Building Committee appointment, the Hebron Board of Education asks selected Heather Pettit to serve as the Board of Education representative on the Hebron Elementary School Water Redemption Building Committee.
Okay, move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Heather Pettit to the Hebron Elementary School Drinking Water Redemption Building Committee.
Okay. Hearing the motion, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have something to discuss.
Sure.
So, John Collins, I've been part of this project for, I don't know, now it's thirteen months, it's been great for Hebron, I think, I wanna thank Val, Lecker, and the Building Committee, who have taken this project from zero to now to $1.2 million project, that is 54% reimbursement by the state, it's on time, pre-bidding meeting is next week, is that right, Wednesday? The Building Committee is, has a number, well, they're all professionals, they dedicated, Shrek Niles put in hundreds of hours to this, they've put in tens or hundreds of hours, I think I counted out that this Building Committee for this project probably put in, at their rate, over $100,000 in fees, if we were to actually, if we actually wanted to be paid. But it's, you know, it's a, it's a great service to, to Hebron. There's one element that I want to point out, I'm part of, I am, yeah, environmental side of this, to be phased out, hopefully, when we get our answers for it, and this project is part plumbing, part environmental, because there's land, and then it's part contracts and construction management. And because it's environmental, and I'm pretty much the only person around here that has a background in environmental, I've kind of felt a special responsibility, because lead is a very dangerous contaminant, and we're talking about schoolchildren. One of the things I said a year ago was that, in environmental, if you do an environmental project, the first thing that you do religiously is data collection. You get all of the data that you have, and because it's useful, and if you don't, I've done enough environmental projects that you've gone through, done a project, and it's failed because we didn't collect all of the data, something else has come out at the end. So, from the beginning, I asked for all of the data, and I didn't get it, I got some of it, I compiled it, I analyzed it, and, you know, we were able to show that all of the pipes should be removed from the school, which was good, because we only took some out, as some schools have done, and they're now paying for it, and, you know, much more than we're gonna be paying. So, so we were able to, with a partial data set, get the reimbursement, the 54% reimbursement, and I think we've made the right decisions in pulling all the pipes. And I think we've made the right decisions in pulling all the pipes. But I would ask that the Board of Education provide us with the ten years of data that are requested as soon as possible. I have asked for it. Andy has asked for it twice, I think. And, and I don't know why we haven't gotten any. I waited this summer until decisions were made by the state to finally FOIA the data. I have FOIA'd the data. I've got some of it. I don't think I should have had to FOIA it. I think they should have given it to me. So the committee includes a person from the Board of Education, and I think that's appropriate, obviously. Board of Education is a partner in this. I hope that when we come out of this, that there is a principle that, number one, parents have a right to know what's in the drinking water in the schools and that that data is readily available on the website, not only currently, but also historically. I believe that, that to me is, is a human right. And I ask that, again, that the Board of Education get us the data because the project's success can be, is, is, can be based on it. That is, it's important that we get that data for the success of this one point two million dollar project. So with that, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor of the motions, say that you're saying aye. 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 Opposed, abstentions, so be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Send that notification out to the board to that point. Item six A is in the packet. This is to approve the school resource officer's job description. Attached is a draft job description for the newly created position of Hebron Police Officer School, I'm sorry, School Resource Officer. That's a town trust, so Hebron Police Officer School Resource Officer. So there's a motion, but before we get into the motion, this was in your packet, the change is redlined, it keeps it open. There's no issue at this point approving this job description. This would suffice whether we end up fulfilling the obligation that was approved of the four part timers. Or if we were to, the applications have been coming very slow, so we have this job, and I'll get to that in the town administration.
Okay.
We have this job advertised as both as a full-time position and a part-time. We went out two or three times in certain areas. We got some applications, but not enough to suffice to fill the four part timers. So the four part timers won't work unless you have four viable part timers. So after the third time, we put it out as a full timer. I had a meeting with the superintendent and the chairman of the board last night, and I'll, I'll bring it up, I have a letter that I can share that, that was sent to them today. So that doesn't change what's in front of you for approvals today. We may come back with a different scenario if we don't get what we're looking for and have to regroup on that, but I just want to make that clear.
Okay. And I know you've worked extremely hard trying to get these applications. It's just not going to hit. You know, people have to understand that the applications are not going to hit.
I mean, how are they using all of the, it's the job market is tight, there's not a lot of people out there getting the jobs. People have jobs.
I, I had a very good meeting with the superintendent and the chair last night, but I'm going to voice my opinion again, being in this position, doing a lot of hiring and knowing a lot of police officers. I checked with the other towns. You got to understand, this is an elementary school versus a high school or middle school. East Adams hired a new one. They're sharing them between three schools. One of the past resident troopers just got hired out at Yale Smith in Hensfield High School. And in talking to some of these people, when they call and inquire now, that most of them are looking for, in their mind, part time is in conjunction with the school year, not nineteen hours a week more, like the thirty-five, thirty-six hour a week for ten months or whatever the school calendar. They want to be home with their wife or their kids or their teachers, or when the kids are off because they've already completed a career, but they still need to work, but the nineteen hours isn't going to suffice. And then, and then talking to, you know, just, I gave the results to the board chair and the interim superintendent. We both agree, and I have bullet points, we'd send it back out, two separate ads for part timers again, full timers again, and I think we received three applications today, all looking for full time. So just.
It just makes sense.
Point of reference. Just makes sense.
And it's harder because we're looking for a specific type of individual. We're dealing with children in an elementary school. We must be very, very careful about the temperament, character, so of, of the person that you want doing it to.
Yes. You know, it may be appropriate for me to just dive into that right now.
Well, I think if you remember, when they came with the proposal, I think one of our questions was, is there a pool out there that would work nineteen hours a week? And.
They guarantee yes.
You told me yes.
Yeah, I reminded, unfortunately, the chairperson's not here anymore, but I reminded the superintendent. So quickly, I drafted, I put together the bullet points of what came out of the meeting last night, so I'll make it public. This was set to both land the superintendent and Heather Pettit, the chair. So it says Heather Pettit, Chairman, and also Lynn Pearson, Superintendent. Here, Mrs. Pettit and Dr. Pearson, thank you for taking the time to meet with me concerning the school resource officer position. At the conclusion of last night's meeting, I have agreed to, one, re-advertising for a full-time slash part-time school resource officer. The second bullet point reads, also to publish the job opening in Hartford Current Sunday, October sixth and Thursday. That's, they don't run them for a weekend, but that's how they do it. So on October tenth, we, we, they don't use a job, CT is another thing called, a reoccurring mop technology. The River East Post, which is for police officers, to shoot in two separate, two separate listings. That's what they want, and that today that's up. Connecticut Department of Labor, the town's website, the Facebook page. We also listed each position separately, and that will remain open until filled or we regroup, which they said went through a month. Contact the current applicants to arrange for interviews. We have two possible for part time, so we don't want to lose them, so we don't look into it. And I personally have placed several calls to surrounding towns to inquire as to fill this position. Also, Trooper Greenwood has been in contact with upcoming retirees within the state police barracks to recruit possible candidates. So we're really trying to put our best foot forward and fill these positions, but we're struggling.
Thank you.
I just don't want to see some mediocre person, oh, we got to get somebody to fill it. He's okay or she's okay. I want a person that is the best for the job without gifts.
It really is a, you know, a specialized position for, for the white person.
Really?
Has to be somebody that's good with children, but also has experience in law enforcement and knows how to wait those two.
Very different than having an SRO in a high school.
So, just before we get started, I'm just going to regurgitate what I said in the last meeting with my own thoughts. I don't believe we should be camping police officers out in our elementary schools. I think there's a lot more prudent way to use our tax dollars. There's no way you can harden buildings, you can do all you can do, but I think it's a false sense of security. And I think if we went with the original intent of having more police officers on patrol randomly at the schools, et cetera, it's a more thoughtful use of our taxpayer dollars, understanding that this is a very, you're going to start out with part time, you now aren't a full time, we're going to go to benefits, et cetera. I think it's a false sense of security. That is my own opinion. Just wanted to put it out there and, and I talked to police officers about it, and that's, that's where I'm coming from. Just wanted to make sure everybody knew that.
So one of the things I, I think, I'm proud of this board in the way that we handle this SRO issue, though I tend to agree with what Brian's saying. In fact, I think we, well, I won't say what everybody said.
Well, I, I agree too.
Okay.
I think we also.
Yeah, we voted on it. But, you know, the problem that we had was that the Board of Education voted six to one for this proposal, and we, we got into it because we are in charge of any other police department. And so we had two boards with two different opinions. And so we did put together a police, a safety, a safety task force in which we invited and we got, I think we had six or seven different law enforcement professionals, those involved in SRO, who are SROs from surrounding communities, that they were citizens of Hebron, but they had jobs elsewhere. I mean, it was an impressive bunch of people. And we went through not only crime rates in Hebron, in which we found remarkably how low our crime rate is, but also what, where this was going. And what I found in this committee, and Dan was on it also, the chairman was on this also, what I saw was there is a push toward police in school, even in elementary schools. And the feeling is, it's going that way, that, that elementary schools are not what they were five years ago. That's what they said, and if you read the report, there's quotes of some of the law enforcement people saying that. And so they couldn't dismiss the idea of putting SROs in those schools. As, as the chief of police from Glassonberry said, it can't hurt. And Glassonberry has an incredible program of SROs, policemen, everything. I mean, they have, and, and, they are, they are a bigger town, they have a higher crime rate, and they have a police department, professional police department. So what we decided was that we would do this because, you know, this is democracy, and this is what they want in their schools, but that at the end of the year, we would reevaluate it as a board, the board selected, we'd reevaluate it. And I think that's what we should, I, I think there's enough parent, I've talked to parents, there's enough parents out there who are younger, you know, that generally younger than us. I never thought about, you know, I just didn't, I never thought about that, not once, but they are, these parents are thinking about it. And so I, so I tend, I, I actually agree with Brian, except for the fact that there are so many other people out there that have a different view.
Thank you. To say, this is for the job description. So, what's your view?
Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approved the job description for the Hebron Police Officer School Resource Officer as president.
All in favor of the motions, say that you're saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions. One abstention.
I'm opposed. I don't agree with them.
Two abstentions. Moving on. Seven B.
Seven B, item of the day, I believe, would be the Capital Improvement Plan, CIP Policy Revision. Attached is a draft of the proposed revision for the Capital Improvement Plan policy for review and discussion. The policy will be included on the October seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen agenda for approval. So what this is, is this is, you have a copy of the old policy and it's marked up with the changes. This was a direction given to me on my goals to look into possibly revamping the CIP, moving forward in a new direction. This is the first glance, this is the first time the board of selectmen are seeing this in their packet, and this is tied for discussion.
Reviewing it, I, and I will say, at one point, I actually served on the CIP. I know, actually, many of our board members have. Upping the dollar amount, I think, is, is wise. Whether or not to go to a hundred thousand is up for discussion.
If you want me to.
Yes, please.
Lay in on that. The policy's been updated a couple of years, not to change or not have a committee, this is the first time that's been proposed, but several years ago, under a different chairman of the board, second Jeff Block, there was discussion of raising the threshold over, over time to get it up to, and at one time it was mentioned a hundred thousand dollars. Because of the direction of looking at this, this is a working document, this is definitely a draft, I went to that extreme in this one, thinking that either after discussion, that might fly, or that may come down to fifty thousand, or it may revert back to the twenty-five and however the board of selectmen wants it. But there was discussion at the time under the other chair that eventually we would get to this.
Right.
The research that I did, I checked several towns similar to Hebron. One was with Robert Lee's Town, another with Codge Creek, how they operate their CIP. And quite frankly, what it is, is the department heads report to the town manager, the town manager sits, as I do now, with the department heads. Whatever the department head requests is listed, the next town will be what the town manager's recommending you forward. At this draft, we said of going to the committee that's presently in place, it would go to the board of selectmen from the first glance for approval. Whenever they approve it, then we put it in the budget process, and then through the budget process, finance and the board of selectmen would have another chance at what would be approved for final vote to the public. So that's what's being proposed here today with the change from any item from twenty-five thousand dollars up to, right now, presently the threshold, we would, under this one, the way it's proposed today, would be anything a hundred thousand dollars in. So that was brought up years ago. We did change it, I think we brought it up to the twenty-five, I think it was less than that. So I think we talked about fifty.
It was.
It was five. So that might be a little bit aggressive, but it's, it's a, it's a first stab at it.
I, as I, I agree, it needs to be higher, the costs of everything is higher up. The capital outlay, which is the other fund that is for expenses up to twenty-five thousand, has worked out well. But as those costs go up for the types of things that we would see in capital outlay, I can easily see why we need to up that amount. So it just, to me, it makes sense. As I say, I don't know if I want to give a number, you know, thirty thousand?
How many things are, I'm just trying to think of this year's CIP numbers.
What, what, in my opinion, this is just my opinion without having an exact answer, it would take a lot of the smaller pickup trucks out of the CIP and be put into the department budgets. A lot of the other items were, were, I don't say all of them, but most of them were like either parking lot improvements, renovations to buildings.
Bigger trucks.
So they were above that threshold. But this is just in following what similar towns do, and I know this was discussed several years ago, that at some point we would move to do this. If we're not there, we're not there. Under the direction from the board of selectmen to revamp this, I put that in at this first glance.
I think the, the numbers, the amount, dollar amounts do need to go up. The capital outlay definitely, I don't know, that one hundred thousand may be too high.
I was like, more of seventy-five.
Yeah, I can go with seventy-five. Because one thing, if something is then in the department head's budget, it doesn't have to go through the whole thing and the department head has more control.
Just, just. I look at these guidance, you know the dollar numbers, and if you think a hundred is going to cover the way, you know, you'd have to do, you know, depending whether it be department expense or CIP, you know best because you've looked at these, these budgets.
It would be, it's definitely going to be a learning curve, but what the, what's going to be the effect is this year to the voting public. The department budgets are going to see a major increase because we're putting things into their budget, would normally be at a separate CIP budget. that would normally be at a separate CIP budget. The light, if there is one at the end of the tunnel, this might be the year to do it, if everybody agrees. And the reason I say that is if the bottom line gets approved, that's in the proposal for two-point-three million dollars to take care of some of those larger items out of the CIP, this won't be that big of a hit, be able to pick some of that stuff up. So that's the reason, really, my mindset, I'm thinking this might be the year to do that. But it's not Andy Tierney's decision, I'm just bringing it up to tell you guys with a proposal that can be, you know, altered. I think with the, with the amount of monies, it's all contingent on approval. But that would, it would be a lot easier to phase in this year because we're going to take a lot of those larger number, two school parking lots, I think the parking lot here, talking possibly the senior center, a couple larger roads that may, you know, that might be the offset.
All right, let me brainstorm. I'm thinking out loud, just as, I did serve on CIP many years ago, for nine years, Andy was on at the time. So I have experience with it. It is a great, Mary Ann, it's a great opportunity for people to get involved, et cetera. But over the years, in my opinion, you, as a member, citizen, whatever, you're hearing why certain departments need certain funds with a limited pool of money to work with, pretty much set by the board of selectmen or by the NIS. And if you look at it from, I think, the town admin staff side, that's the most efficient way, I think, to identify capital projects going forward and put it on that professional staff, say, here's what we see coming down the pipe. And then they are held accountable for that. I don't necessarily agree with, just from budgeting standpoint, going too high on that dollar amount because when the general person looks at the budgets and wonders why XYZ, the library, needs fifty-eight thousand or forty thousand dollars more this year than last year, they're going to say, you know, there's going to be more bumps. And that causes questions. And a lot of people don't do a lot of research before they're looking at the budget right at the end of the year. I think that could be problematic, from the standpoint of admin, or the future board of selectmen, by the way, trying to get budgets approved. But from a standpoint of efficiencies, I think it would be more efficient to have professional staff all across the board, put this type of process together for your elected officials. It takes the emotion out of it, because sitting as a member of CIP and listening to, say, the fire chief explain why they needed these four things, and it's life or death, or could be, and you felt like a schmuck if you didn't give them whatever they wanted, when somebody else's request at the library might have been just invalid because it was a safety issue at the library, but somebody had a better sales pitch. Taking that out of the equation, I think, would be cruel. It's not to slight anyone, or anybody was a great group to work with, and I thought it was actually probably one of the most fun. Open spaces is the most fun. But that being said, I think that's my thought process on this whole change. I don't think you want to go too high on the dollar amount. At this point, I think you need to have a smaller budget to work with, carve it out, so you're smoothing out your budgets. Department heads know what their responsibilities are, you're not fluffing anything. It's what you need, and your help in the fire will find beer, more and more, on the bigger dollars. And that holds the admin and your town collective officials beat to the fire for budgets going forward. That's me.
I've served on that CIP the last four years. We had some changes. We took the fire chief out, and we took the facilities manager out because they had voted, and he didn't think of that. That was working, so we eliminated those two this last two years. I think maybe it's to the department heads and to town manager that this is the right thing to do. You learn a lot, what's needed in town, but you can learn in other ways. We can make sure that we put things on web page to let people know these are the items that we're looking at when we select you and they get in the year. But I think that it really needs to be in the, the department heads and Andy. Because what was happening every year is it comes to the board of selectmen, we were making changes, we're listening to what Andy has to say. So I really think that that's where we need to be. And we can have somebody get up there and talk to us and say, "We need a bucket truck to take down those trees," and then we changed that and got rid of that bucket truck in that CIP. Maybe that was the right thing, maybe it wasn't the right thing to do. But I think that the department heads and the town manager need to make those decisions. And yes, I learned a lot while on CIP, but I don't think that there's that, that we really need to have that kind of committee, that I think it can be done. For finally.
Well, I think CIP members, just echoing what you said, are getting frustrated because they make recommendations, and they come to us, and we're, we have, I think, a little bit more sensitivity to cost and to budget. And priorities might be a little different, and we are listening to the town manager because he's the professional manager of the town. So, you know, I think we all saw at the budget meeting last year that the chairman of the CIP was very frustrated with us. I think, regardless, I think we're going to probably listen to Andy and the people closest to the problems. That's just the point.
One thing I can say, we've been very, very fortunate for all the people that served on the CIP, especially the chairman. And I served on it for nineteen, almost twenty years, but that's irrelevant. But I saw a lot of chairman in that time, and Mel was one of them. And there's a lot of work that goes into that.
Well, the work done has to be done.
And that's, that's my point. So it's worked great, we've got great volunteers and great chairmans throughout the years. Mel, Charlie did a great job. I forget the gentleman, I was not thinking his name, moved away. Lou Henman, Mark Stewart, I think, there was another gentleman who worked at the insurance company, was chair for a while. They all did great jobs, we had the presentations, which were all good. But a lot of that extra work falls on the town manager staff. And the night meetings is, takes a toll on the public works director, even though he's not a voting member now, has to be there, that's during the winter months. More meetings for myself. So that's not a reason to do it, but if you put all these things together, it's time to at least take a look at it.
I think some of that time and resources can be well spent doing things that are, not that CIP isn't necessary, but other things can still get the job done.
Yes, I just want to reiterate the proposal that's there, if you want to disregard the money amount. Is, department heads, as they do now, would submit to the town managers they do now. The town manager would make a list, which I have done the last couple of years, what I would agree to. But that still shows what any, any department would request to me. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be erased, there'd be that column that came in, what I'm suggesting move forward, then it goes to the board of selectmen. The board of selectmen weighs in, and at that time, that's what gets put into the budget process that would go to board of finance, board of selectmen to be approved before it goes to the voters. So you guys would get two stabs at it after the departments came to the town manager. So I, I don't have the final stab.
Once again, it's two steps at a time, right? Yes.
I don't think we've made an awful lot of changes, there's a couple. The air conditioning was a big one. Really not a lot. This year was funding, we just, we didn't have the funding for a couple items.
Which is the air conditioning. I was doing it that year.
Yeah.
Let's not go there.
If it's all right with the board, I'd like to offer good comments from the floor.
All right, I'll go. I'd just like to say that the last couple of years, being involved with the library, forwarding CIP projects, and last year with a tour with the committee, I myself learned a lot, and I would like to, when I'm not working nights anymore, serve on the CIP, because you learn a lot about the different departments and what's required for them. But as far as buildings, I think the town maybe should look at a facility, the common manager, director, that really keeps up on what the buildings are going to need and can better budget them than maybe the department heads saying, oh, you know, five years, we need a roof. Seven years, we might need an upgrade on the heating, but not really knowing because they're not professionals. So I think that might be one way for the town to better plan for their long-term, large expenses. Everybody does put in a lot of hours in early to get the CIP notice. There's maybe a lot of credit.
The long-term plans have been pretty solid. It was the things that sprang up that I think created the most adversity. Yeah, most of the things that were scheduled out for five years, you know, were pretty solid and basically been accepted. There's been some changes in the fire department with, you know, changing of vehicles and the way some of the vehicles were being utilized. But that was, how you best word it? That was a plan change by the chief. And, you know, we ended up selling some vehicles and purchasing different vehicles. But that was a program that he had put together. So by and large, the biggest issues, I think, with CIP, Mel, even correctly, was just trying to, it seemed like there was a footing issue, trying to get bearings and where, you know, different groups were headed.
Yeah, I really can't speak to the chairman's comments that he made, and he had his reasons. I think what we're, well, first of all, I don't think that the comments that were made last year should be a reason to change this totally. Having said that, I think the whole process needs to be relooked at. The committee's been asking for a higher dollar amount ever since Anne Fitzpatrick was around when we created the original, going from five thousand to twenty-five thousand. I think that the scope can be changed if we do what many large, other large, many other towns and cities do in terms of rolling stock. They have a sinking fund. That sinking fund is managed by the town manager based on recommendations or requests from the departments. I don't think the pickup truck should be going to CIP. That type of a vehicle, well, first of all, capital's supposed to last twenty years. That's not lasting twenty years, so it's never lasts. And then we have the blue Dodge that we've replaced multiple times. Town manager knows that type of stuff and should be controlling it. Budgeting one-on-one says, your budget should stay as flat as possible. Putting these into department budgets, I agree with you, Brian. You know, they're going to go up and down, and people, and what Andy said, they're going to ask questions. I think if you were to take and simply segregate out what truly is capital and have some sort of group of people be able to research and report that, I think you're going to find a greater acceptance from people in town. If you look at, I've been doing this for fifteen years, not quite up to you yet, Andy, but I'm getting there. If you look at the CIP budget over the, over the time I've been involved in it, CIP will pass when the budget won't pass. I think there are multiple reasons, but I think one of them is, is that there's input from the public, more input from the public. To speak to the issue of administrative time, I can't imagine how much time Don and Dory put into this. And they shouldn't have to do that. I mean, I don't think that the CIP committee needs to have all the documentation on items that are going to be requested five years down the road. Somebody should, and I think Sue's recommendation or suggestion about a facilities manager, I don't, I don't think we need a quote facilities manager. I think we need a facilities organization that we would pay a fee to, to monitor our facilities. We don't do necessarily the best job in preventive maintenance. And part of that's because our buildings are where they are, and we have to take all of our money and put it, or allot most of our money and put it to emergencies, rather than trying to pad off these issues. I think if we hired a facilities firm just to oversee our facilities, then we could plan for the future better, we could maintain our equipment better, things like that. I guess, I ramble on and on, but I think need, changes need to happen. But I think, and I think the town manager's office needs to have the ability to manage the rolling stock through a sinking fund, which, by the way, would be a separate fund.
Yeah. We had actually talked about that, actually, eight years ago.
We've been talking about that forever.
You know, trying to get something just for vehicles.
And we've gone to, I've gone to many, many workshops and heard many finance directors throughout the tape say, "You need to have two things, or you're in trouble. You need to have sinking fund for your rolling stock, number one. Number two, you need to have a contingency fund. And if you don't, then you're going to be up against the wall." We manage our contingency a little bit different, it doesn't go into the budget, but we do have a healthy fund balance, and we do supplement appropriations when they're, they're required. And I could go on and talk to that one, but I'll stop. But bottom line is, is I think that the people that put their time in, I don't think they regret it. I mean, everybody learns, learns a lot, and they do it willingly. And I think it's good for, I mean, we're doing, we are Hebron, trying to educate people. And here we are, trying to take opportunities away. Opportunity versus efficiency, as a finance guy, efficiency is more important. But opportunity is important, too. We pass budgets because of the opportunity we create. So I'll stop at that point. I think I gave you a perspective from both sides. And I think the solution to this is somewhere in the middle.
And because of the order, we've gotten where we knew, and we go matches to CIP. Does it matter that it has to be in CIP, can it be?
No, as long as we continue to maintain a five-year plan, a capital improvement five-year plan.
Then it qualifies as a
Yeah, local, local, okay. As long as the town has that, we still are eligible for the local smart.
I think, Clara, you'd agree that when it comes to the five-year plan, Don takes everything that we didn't pass, pushes things around, we don't spend a lot of time on it.
And I think all the numbers games we play, numbering one, two, three to fourteen, and moving this around and that, and all these discussions and trying to move on. I mean, it gets frustrating. Who wants this one, who wants that, you know, who's got their own agenda or whatever? I just, I think the time is better spent with the head of the departments and Andy doing
doing it. I saw what happened last year, the frustration and everything and quite frankly, I got frustrated myself just being part of the committee while it was going on. And I'd rather see the department heads and Andy than, than that, well, than what went on last year.
So, I mean, I, I like the citizen participation. I think people do obviously like it. It's, it's tangible. I think that's why it passes because it's stuff, it's useful stuff. If, if we were to modify it, I think we might want to have a meeting with the group, with the board of selectmen so that we can voice our expectations or our, maybe we are, have a misperception about what's necessary. So that when they go out and, and they hear, you know, John Collins doesn't want a bucket truck or something or doesn't think any of this year, they go out and say, well, we went out, looked, we looked at all the, and come back with a compelling argument for the board of selectmen that indeed you're wrong, you're wrong about that, or you should, you should look at this again. As opposed to it just being a menu, right? Just whether it's a comeback, it's a menu, whether we look at Andy's menu and then we decide based on budget.
David Morrison, still living in Hebron. Mal, there has been a great mentor to many of us who've joined on and off on, on the committee. And I have to, I have to reinforce that, that he has been a web of information and history to do with it. I prepared this little write-up before all of this discussion tonight and then I'd just like to comment on some of the things that have come up. But I thought perhaps I would express my opinion about the CIP committee. I've suspected that the CIP, the CIP action would eventually occur, which I think is rather sad. And the reason, over the past decades, the CIP members have, had a long period of toil over a short period of time and give up several meetings that we, we can day study documents in three-inch notebook, all to achieve the results, that all applicants, then debates during the meeting discussions. It's a lot of time, but it's a great time to learn other people from different venues, attitudes and opinions towards their communities since boards and commissions are represented. And I was a member at large without any agenda, but was there to represent in many cases the people I can speak with throughout the community over time. Now, in recent years, the board of selectmen have done their thing and altered CIP suggestions and that's been called frustrations to the CIP. I, I didn't get frustrated. I, I understood that the formal CIT presentation to them was just that, a lot of decisions were made before it was made. I know the charter, which Andy has brought up and I have read online, it does give that power to the board of selectmen and we all, when we join, we know that because there's a, there's a document that we're all read when we first join and we read every year because there are changes about our responsibilities on the, on the committee. The one thing about CIP is we do a hands-on thing and anyone who's known my activities on it will know sometimes I've done my own hands-on things and all Mal has let me know, we don't do that, David. But it's what I do. And I do come up with some interesting things and I think the members listen to them even though I did a no-no and did some inspections on my own. But sometimes that's the best inspection you can get rather than the tour you're given where we don't come in this room and look at something and we don't look at the, well, all of that, that there are certain things that are avoided. You look at stuff that perhaps you don't get to walk through. To me, it's a sort of a punch in the stomach that CIP might be dissolved. Taxpayers dedicated to the effort. I, I was in the CIP numerous years in 1990s when, when I was the chairman of Planning and Zoning Commission. Yes, some of the changes, the monies, the procedures have certainly added to the ease of being a member and the ease of more satisfying the process. I was also the past three years a citizen at large. I don't feel frustration. I just know that there's always a frustration when you work in public service. I've been on charter review commission and other boards and commissions and, and I do understand that not everybody agrees. You've got to live with it. And as my dad used to say, if you're not having a good time, someone brought that up tonight, don't do it anymore. For some reason, I've been doing this since 1988, working towards my community's better. One, one problem I have with the new plan to go totally with directors and the system that's been discussed, that no resident taxpayer committee involvement will ever be there. I feel that sometimes that's very important. I also feel that's one reason why it might pass every year because I spoke into my constituents, so to speak, friends and neighbors about, we try and avoid getting over a million dollars because we're afraid it won't pass, which is one of the concerns we've had. I think two years ago, we did a little over. This year it had to go back because low set was cut and also other concerns of the community. So one of the things about having this committee is, and I reflect the words from this, this person, being committed, CIP is the one committee that you learn every aspect of your community. It, to me, and I tell people, you ought to get on it because you might just be interested in the education system or you might just be interested in safety or whatever, but you learn about every aspect and you hear, and I know, I heard tonight, salesperson, we know we have a great salesperson as a director, but you put that out of your mind. You look at the equipment, you listen to all of the people, at least I do, with Eno Keo, as to each person that spoke to us, sites we visited is important as the previous one. I'm adding to this. I, I just, I'm trying to reflect upon other things that were said this evening. Yeah, I'll skip that. I've been a property owner in Hebron since 1978 and some, and I already mentioned, some change is good, but dissolving an important, to me, an important CIP committee. And I know that, that it is an awful hard thing to say, do you need it or don't need it? Is it efficient, not efficient? But educational, the more people you have that know about your town, the more people they speak to within the town. In the case, if you have 10 or 11 people, we go out and they say, what you been up to, CIP, we discussed this, that, the needs of the town. Most people don't know it. The trucks are going $200,000, $300,000 a piece. You put aluminum beds on, you put Sanders. They, they don't know that the safety of their roads depends on that piece of equipment. And, and one more, broken axle unexpectedly had to be left in a parking lot doing its job. I have to thank, I have to thank Charles Daniels. I was there, I know, he was frustrated. He, every chairman's different. I was a different kind of chairman for planning and zoning, following Fred Schott. He was straightforward. I must say, his leadership of, of the committee taking after Mal, I thought his leadership was very good, his patience with the folks there was good and his participation was, was excellent. He wasn't a lazy chair. And I, and I was there when he spoke and I, I can understand, it's no different than what I've said in the public, I'm sure, over the years, is, is the feelings, the emotion from that particular person. Hebron continues requesting for volunteers to step forward and serve. And I believe it was John that started some committee to try and bring people in to tell them, was it John? Yeah, to try and show people different aspects of the community, like the young lady that came in tonight, two years she's been here, bang, she's in. That's terrific. And, and normally once you start, sometimes it's habit forming. I, I can attest to that. By continuing this, I sometimes know why do we have to keep asking? It could be that some people that have been frustrated have expressed the feelings of their bad experiences, of which in all my years, there's only been one bad experience and it was almost funny to say this, when I was chair, we filled the auditorium, rammed over the Amson Lake regulations. And I had a book, this, that was the most uncomfortable part of my being chair because then you had all sides. It was all over the sewer project and having to regulate the number, the size of the lots and, oh my God, we had a party that night. And, and, and they didn't seem to understand at the same time, the sewer project was going on, Amson Lake regulations had to be changed because they were going to be served and we had a quota as to how much volume we could pass on to, to the plant in Polchester, which then pumps overnight. I mean, that, that was uncomfortable, but other than that, I can say the rest was very, very nice. I believe I probably stopped stepping forward, but you never know, sometimes temptation comes before you. I, I trust that some form of a committee will continue. I feel that the volunteers offer something by going to all the sites and learning about the things and knowing the charter does say the VOS has certain controls. And I know we give our decisions, Andy gives his input and we've known that upfront. The board of selectmen, much like the charter commission, many times will pass out information that they like to hear and the board, the CIP receives all that and we have to absorb it and then listen to each individual party. The concern with CIP with just the directors is there will be certain aspects of a community that will be forgotten and perhaps in some people's minds are unnecessary. I bring up case in point, Peter's House was one where you, people either liked it or didn't like it, but the town purchased it with the land for the current use. We, we kind of got it. I'm very pleased that it got the funding to be able to get grants to get it to this point. I was there today and it is a slow process, but it's a very unique, detailed process that's been done there. And I'm very proud of the volunteers, who you talk about $100,000. Proud of the volunteers that have put the time in there and it, it, it is a unique piece. Like I say, Hebron bought it with the property and I'm thankful, at least we're looking forward to having it become either a museum, meeting place, or whatever is the final decision. But that's the type of thing that was controversial, but I'm glad we were able to fund what it did. I'm afraid with just directors, a project like that and other small items, even pieces of a library might just go right over the tops of the director's heads. And even the new library director this year, you touched on it, they do not understand the building and I don't blame him. We do have a qualified building crew.
Oh, yes.
And, and that touched a little bit on what you suggested, to take care of facilities. Yeah. And, and with that, at least, thank you very much for, for me exceeding my, my 10 minutes. But I, I really want you to know that as a member of it for only five years, the 1990s, well, maybe six years and three, that, it's, it's been enjoyable and I, and I think it's important to keep the resident taxpayer involved in that type of committee so they can express their opinion. And I, I appreciate having been on it.
Thank you.
If I might, and I speak succinctly, I would suggest that you think about and come to the same conclusion that We Are Hebron can be equated with CIP. Serving on CIP is certainly similar to taking, being a part of that We Are Hebron. What's the same purpose?
Thank you. Thank you all. I think we have a lot to consider, think about. I think at this point, probably the best thing would be for us to each write down our thoughts or suggestions, get them to Andy somehow, and see if we can get some sort of a compilation of, of our thoughts and we'll have to go from there. I'm sorry, it's not going to probably be done next week.
Well, it's not my championship, I want to get it done.
So when CIP starts, beginning of December?
The end of December.
End of December. So we've still got a little bit of time, not a lot.
Well, I want to make it clear, the worst case scenario would be we reappoint another committee while you're studying this stuff. I want to make sure that nobody's forcing anybody to sign.
And I have no qualms at all about putting them out. I, I don't know, it's been talked before about a sinking fund for vehicles. I don't know what that would look like.
That's pretty easy. That's, that's what that is, the percentage of your total budget. And you got it offset in a separate account for capital expenditure or rolling stock.
That's a question I asked many years ago. Was that what I meant? We didn't have a speaking side.
My involvement in the town that I was in prior to coming here, we had that, we had a sinking fund. There were, no offense, there was no CIP rules and that was, that was new to me 25 years ago or 24 years ago when I came here. That was a learning curve for me. But I, I also witnessed how it worked. I was wondering how that was going to be because it seems like you're on the Price is Right and you're all bidding me. It's a lot of money too. And I, and I think I didn't get away with it, without trying to be funny, but I think Brian was there and I know Mal was there and Mark Stewart never wanted to purchase or replace his roadside mower. I think it went. I think this committee was shamed into finally replacing it because it had been on there for nine years.
Nine years.
Nine years asking to come back. I, I think they just did it out of pure pity. Exactly. But I, I never lost my temper or took it personally. I just, if it wasn't in the cards, and that's how you have to go forward.
Brian was arguing one side.
Oh, oh my God, the sidewalks, yes.
So it, it does, it does have its future. Times have changed, but I'm, it's not Andy's turn to decision on how this moves forward. So.
Mary Ann, to your point, I think that We Are Hebron is the perfect place for people to get their feet wet. It's actually learn from the department heads exactly what your town government does and how it operates. CIP is a trial by fire in two months and you have to come up with how to spend taxpayer a buck a year a lot.
And I was never frustrated with it, unlike some other people.
Well, with CIP, what that allows you to see is the actual town infrastructure. It's not necessarily the town setup, but it's the town infrastructure.
You can see it better than you can feel it through We Are Hebron. Maybe that's what we'll do next year. We can add that next year.
We did it with the vaults. It'd be much easier with the vaults. So we could, we could actually add that to the We Are Hebron, to bring them down to the actual facilities and see the, the rolling stock or the planning department or the WPC A or.
We have the fire department yesterday.
And the rust. And the rust.
And the rust.
And the rust.
And the blue pickup truck.
Okay.
That's a classic.
Okay.
Something we'll have to think about, John.
Okay, let's move on if we can. We have the resolution for the Emergency Management Performance Grant and this is, I believe, the every year grant that we.
Yeah, what, what this is, this is actually 90% of the budget for the emergency management department. So this is a grant that comes up every year and there's a lot of work that has to be done, submitted and it's, it's a timely thing. So it's in front of you just about as much time as you need, so hopefully it gets approved. But there's a resolution and there's a copy that was in the, in the pack for everybody to review. There's no changes, other than the dates.
Okay. Resolution, resolve that the town of Hebron may enter into, with and deliver to the state of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary and/or appropriate and further resolve that Andrew J. Tierney, as town manager of the town of Hebron, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of Hebron and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents. This authorization is for the EMPG, Emergency Management Performance Grant, for the performance period of October 1st, 2000. for the performance period of October 1st, 2019, to September 30th, 2020, in the amount of $5,000 with a local match of $5,000. And we have all the documents and paperwork. So all in favor of the resolution? Say what they say. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So be it. Next, we have our draft agenda, which has been graciously put out in front of us. So if anybody has anything we want to add to it? If so, whatever, make the appropriate phone calls so we can discuss and get that taken care of. Next meeting is Thursday, October 17th, just in case. And that will be back at the office building. Anybody have anything to add on that?
I have to come on though.
Okay. Any other new business?
Under the Town Manager's Report, I don't have any business.
Okay. There are none, Town Manager's Report.
Okay. So in your packets under the correspondence, you saw once again that our Finance Department was awarded the CAFRA award, which is Excellent Government Accounting in Missing Funds. That is 15 years in a row. So that's a milestone for the Town of Hebron. Kudos to the Department and Wayne and your staff. We also got the letter of commitment for the intersection of 316 and 66. That's when Governor Lloyd was here and funding was tight. He held any project that wasn't designed 90% furtive. So that was the one that fell underneath that criteria. But we worked through the original Capitol CROG agency. Two years later, it finally got back on the list. And of course, with the state's wisdom, it cost another $200,000 more. So we had to go back to the kitty and we got 99.9% of that increase through the CROG planning agency. So we thanked them and the town received the letter, as I said it to you, about a week later. So we're moving forward with that project.
Now, is that going to be a springtime at this point?
I'm not, I'm not sure because it's still in design and it goes back to D O T for approval. So as you, as everybody knows, we're two years into our sidewalks. Being done right when St. Peter's Pumpkin Fest is and again I'm Kimbrett, the city guy. So I'm not the most popular person on Route 85 and Church Street.
But the delay
Was not, yeah, it was due through D O T.
No, no, but the delay of construction to 8:30 in the morning
Yeah.
is much appreciated by
Yeah, there was an issue. I heard it from several residents and I reached some of the selectmen. So I mainly stepped in and the D O T agreed with me. And they got out of the intersection. There was a couple of things going on. It wasn't just the sidewalks, but this is much better for school. So what the Town Manager's doing under the Town Manager's Report, I spent a lot of time with this S R O. We had a meeting last night, as I already went through earlier, and the budget, so we'll beat that again. The triple E virus and the partial wreck programs has taken up almost a day and a half of trying to quill residents, how upset they are about canceling the trick or treat or the haunted hayride at the Lions Park. A lot of people feel that we're premature in doing so, but the guidance of the Health Department and knowing we're not going to have a hard frost, that property is like surrounded by wetlands. So we canceled it there, we postponed it, and it's going to be on Saturday up at the Gilly Hill School. That's posted, I believe that's about 18, which is a Saturday. But that's out there, that's posted all over town.
They changed the time.
The time and the location.
Location as well?
Yeah. Because Gilly Hill School is considered high and dry. And they're just going to congregate in the parking lot. They're not going to do the haunted hayride. It's unfortunate. I met with the Green Committee this week. They're looking to regroup. I met with Caitlin. We're working on a second round of positive goals for sustainable CT. And we want to see how we can still continue to get the towns and continue to recycle and get the message out there. So they're going to be coming in front of the board of selectmen, probably after the new board's in place. It was abstract on the agenda because the information came in after the packet went out, but we have a public meeting with Connecticut Water Test Results for the Ridger Road Property Area and the wells that were tested. That's set up. When did I write that date down? That's, I'm going to, I'll send it to you. It's at the town hall. I think it's, I think it's next week. I think it's, the all board meeting's on the 8th.
That is Tuesday.
All board meetings, the 8th. So let me get this date out. This is, I think this is the 16th. I don't know why I didn't write the date down. It's almost a month.
The 18th is also the
Education Foundation.
Theater in Blackwood.
Okay. So I'll zero that in and get the date out and we email it to you. Anyways, we conducted a fall town picnic for the employees. That went very well. Gail Griffin was in attendance for that. We have the budget meeting coming up, which is the 8th. That's a joint meeting between the Board of Finance, Board of Select and Board of Ed to give direction on how to proceed to prepare the budgets moving forward.
Was that meeting held? Tuesday? Here, right?
It's here.
Here. We're putting the finishing touches on the personal policies. We've gotten to that. We went through them. We sent it to the rank and file. They've made some suggestive changes. I gave them plenty of time. A lot of them are dragging their feet. We got them in today. We sent it back to the attorney for final review. Staff meeting on Monday, we're going to go through the changes. Then hopefully, I think they're on the next agenda. And we're hoping to get them, so this board will approve those before your terms or whatever people's terms are on. So that's the goal, trying to get that done. So I can complete my new directive. As I said, staff meeting on Monday regarding that. A letter, I would like, or if you could, ask selectmen, see the selectmen, letters of support for the St. Peter's Land Purchase. There's a special town meeting on October 24th. But the deadline for the road restarts Monday to Tuesday, and then it's out that Friday and then the following Monday, Tuesday. So you only got a couple of shots. So if you find it in your heart to do that, to ask people to come out and support that purchase, that's something I think is going to betterment the whole town and the streets.
So it's the 24th, Andy?
October 24th. That's at the town hall, 7:00 P. M. And then also, if you remember, let me refresh your memories. We had the joint E D C meeting with the Board of Select. That's October 21st. That's at 7:00 P. M. to review the survey that was filled out. And we want to move forward on that. So Mike and I are meeting with Chairman of that to go over that. We got some sort of organizational stuff ready for that meeting on 21st. So a lot of stuff's been going on, trying to fulfill what the selectmen are doing, direct us to do. 7:00 P. M. That's their normal, their normal meeting.
Could you do me a favor and just do an email blast
Oh, sure.
of all the different dates?
Yeah.
Because I'm already on the paper.
She was getting time to type in all these places in there.
So they think it's only going to be an hour? I think it's going to be more than that.
Okay. No problem.
So it's gone, nothing happened in October?
Well, that, that agenda's pretty full too. So that's all I had as far as the town manager.
Just one question.
The Small Cities Grant we received as well.
Yes, I saw that, which is great. The 18th, is that in daytime? Do you have that with the Gilly Hill School?
It's, I thought I saw it from 2:00 to 5:00.
Okay, the reason I'm saying is the Hebron Education Foundation Dinner is that night.
I shouldn't have, I shouldn't have misspoke. I don't have any phone. It's on, it's on social media, it's on the partial rec webpage.
Okay, no, that's fine. Just
Yeah. And hopefully that dinner's on the town calendar.
I do not know. Because I
Hopefully it is.
Didn't know if you knew the 18th is a Friday?
Okay, so you're right. Rich put the wrong date. Perfect. It's the 19th. That's from my
Yeah, because I heard you say the next meeting's 17th.
That's what it was. I got, I'm trying to blame Rich, but he did it. But that makes perfect sense. It is the 19th. I got the wrong
At what time did you say then?
It's on the Saturday.
At what time?
It's 2:00 to 5:00. I want to confirm that. On the webpage.
The Trump War Treaty will be held Saturday, October 19th, 4:00 to 5:30 at Gilly Hill.
Okay.
Let me just say a shout out to anybody that wants to know what the event schedule is, should sign up on the email, the L Y email on our website and get all the Town Manager's reports and all of the information from the board meetings and whatever. You'll get all of the events.
All I got is the Town Manager's Report.
No, you get events too, I get them.
Did you sign up for it?
You have to sign up for it.
I did sign up for it. I'm getting the Town Manager's
Your filter isn't working too bad.
Something else we'll check and do.
That's the only event they want you to know about. You don't want to go to any events.
They got to live with me for two more.
Okay. Okay, move. All set?
Yeah.
Okay. So moving along. We have our consent agenda. These are items that are considered routine in nature and I'm multitasking here not well, which the board may or may not need to discuss individually and may be voted on as approved. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section may request their chair to remove it for later discussion and a separate vote if necessary. And basically, we only have one, the approval of minutes of September 12th, 2019, the regular meeting, and then the tax refunds as listed. So does anybody have anything on the minutes?
Page 5.
Oh, okay.
It says keep parking at Senior Center and it should be love parking. It's about halfway down the first paragraph.
Page 5, I don't see the idol.
I can find, I can't wait outside. It's It's Starts under Agenda Items Taken and then it goes on to the next page and it's the next page after that. That's the only thing I saw.
Yeah, I didn't see anything, but you may just
Number four, mine, my last name is O, I saw. First page, four, first, what? Second to the first is D. I thought maybe it's, everybody knows where. This way I can say it wasn't me, it was somebody else. Maybe it's someone else. So back to this, with those minor modifications. Any, anybody else? Okay. All in favor, is anyone saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So be it. Okay. Laser reports.
Okay, so I got the Green Committee and so, just to add what Andy said. To continue on with the swap chat. And I hope we're able to, because I think that's a good thing to have. They talked about Hebron being a bike friendly certified community, which other communities are that, and getting bike racks, which would be really good for Hebron. We had some bike racks in the parts of Red. People have asked me about that. They're expensive though. So I encourage them to put a proposal together for that Heartwood Foundation. So there'll be multiple proposals, the arts, et cetera, possibly recommitting business. I said this, the Economic Development meeting, we went over all the surveys and that meeting, I think is going to be really productive. I was going to say, we should probably have it for two hours. There was a lot of good feedback and I think we can refocus the committee and get some good stuff done, additional good stuff done. The, I've already said the H G S 311, the Mediation Building Committee, Wednesday is pretty good. And then October 14th is the environmental inspection, right? 14th.
14th, 15th, 16th, yeah.
So as they're proceeding on that, it's really good. We Are Hebron, we had our third session yesterday. We have, there are almost 20 people. Really good feedback yesterday, Elvis Carlos at the Senior Center. The evaluations are excellent. We're getting good feedback and I think people appreciate it. We have, this time we have even better attendance than we had last time.
Because we more than doubled the numbers.
Also works.
They're interacting. So we know that, we're not putting them to sleep. They're awake because they're asking questions. So And at the end, like last night, someone came up to me, he's very interested in vacancies we have for alternates on a couple of committees. So its purpose is being in here too.
So next week, it's Fire Department, Wednesday at 7:00. We have a lot of dropping, so if it's interesting, fire and police, police is interesting, we'll see that we can, the Cooper Greenland will put together the statistics for Hebron, which are extremely relevant to see now. People, anybody can drop in. That's it for me.
Okay.
Let's see. C I P, their Board of Finance did not meet since our last meeting. And we're going to W P C A, we have that, and we meet next Tuesday.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. I've got three things from my free slices. Douglas Library, the R B Digital Magazine Access Platform, where you access your magazines online, is being used so you can sit at home and use your library card, look at your magazines. The Teen Zone is doing well. Programming will begin on Wednesdays from 3:30 to 4:30. A story time did start on September 17th and as usual, it's well attended. I'm going to add a little personal note in here about the library. My son was in from San Francisco last week and we decided we were going to do some things with him. So I went to my friendly library and got a museum pass to the New Britain Library and one for Mystic Seaport for the next day. We saved quite a bit of money and I just want the public out there that's listening to us to know, these chances are here and you don't even need to come in anymore to get them. Those too are available online with your library card number. Hebron Board of Ed, they are excited to report they received a grant for $10,000 from Wepco Plastics, which will use to buy a C N C milling machine for Hebronel. The superintendent search is moving forward with focus groups being held and Dan, John and I attended one just recently. Commission on Aging. The Medicare Open Enrollment Period starts October 15th and runs through December 7th. To make an appointment at the Senior Center to discuss To make an appointment at the Senior Center to discuss your options for health and drug care, just please call 860-228-1700. The winter heating assistance applications will also begin on October 15th, again, call for appointments. The Seasonal Flu Clinic, which is sponsored by Chad and Health, will open on Tuesday, October 15th, from 9:30 to 11:30, and that's one busy day.
Okay.
I happen to not, Park and Rec, I should not get to, working, but open space was rescheduled, I think, toward the end of the month.
Okay, and my turn. I'm going to do something that we haven't done as a liaison, I'll do that in a second. Fire Department, they're planning for the Thanksgiving senior dinner that they have this done. And I will have more information, actually, going up to Sharon and, you know, Colbrook. You get that information for the seniors, which is something that the Fire Department's done, what, I was, it's 15 years, so it's been a great time. Now, for the thing that, I hope people forgive me. I was the farmer at Glorial Day, so as a result, I was not able to get over to Peter's House for the excavation. And since we have someone here who was there. I will have her, if you would please express what all happened with the archaeology.
You're talking about Gail and myself? You were going there.
She knew that.
Wonderful day, it was sponsored by the Heritage Consultants Group, who got the bid to do the archaeology around the house and in the basement. So, they had all sorts of additional groups there. And that kid stayed and they had adults and they threw dust all over everyone who walked in the light.
Okay.
But other than that, there was the presentation of the Connecticut Freedom Trail plaque, which we have never before received, because we really have no spot to put it. We have no actual location that was Caesar and Lois and the whole induction thing. But we received that and all of a sudden, the Peter's House had never before received its Historic Properties Designation plaque, so both were presenting. And Gail accepted the, well, she sort of stood back and let the old Peter's relatives get the Freedom Trail one. And then it got passed along to me, but David the one said, she's got it. And it was, you're going to get a copy for each one of them? Well, when he promised that there were only three of them there, then probably another person showed up. Well, I think there were seven there last week, but- But there were tours of the house. It was, it was really, I thought, a very nice day. Gail, did you? Very much so, yes, I did. I was very glad that I went. And for anybody in the public, again, that's watching us, they should pay attention to when that place is open and go in and see the work that's been done by the volunteers from our community to vessel. Still a lot to do. Yes. Brian's wife did sign up, and how do you think they've gotten in touch with her?
It's nice, the floors, they sanded the floors, very gorgeous. The white boards, it's just gorgeous. A lot of the plaster work is done.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, it's, it's a beautiful home.
I visited it and one thing they had found during the excavation is different pieces of china and other artifacts, and they found a lot of interesting things within the chimney-
Yes.
-debris. And I was over there today and there was a fellow doing fine work on the molding where there were knots. I went over to give something to one of the fellows that wasn't there, concerning construction of the log cabinet back in Vermont. But they, I'm very proudly, and I mentioned it earlier, very proud about the effort that's been done there by people that just stood up and did it.
Pieces are coming together.
Yes.
It's been a long, a long run, but pieces are coming together. It's just a pinnacle hole. And then there's another thing that's coming up, and I don't know if you want to bring it up tonight, Rosie the River.
I sent that out to all of you, just as I received the note from a person who was a Connecticut rep, as well as the National President of the Rosie the River Memorial Rose Garden Association. This next year, 2020, of course, is the 75th anniversary of the end of World War II. We, in Congressional District Number Two, because of our observation post, were selected to be the location for the Congressional Tomb Memorial Garden. So, we'll have to keep that in mind and probably have some nice ceremony with our various politicians and maybe going as far as Joe Courtney, I mean, he was there when he dedicated the observation post itself. But anyway. I think that gold medal that they're pushing, which is what the letter was about, if anyone opened it, is a nice thought, because those Rosie the Rivers really did something special back when. And as soon as the war was over, they lost their jobs. But-
It's an important part of history, and it shows the integrity of the American people and the strength of the American people and the resolve of the American people.
Let's hope we can regain that.
Yeah.
It starts at the top.
Okay, thank you. I could not have said it anywhere near as accurately or as good as you did, so thank you very much. Okay, anybody have anything else? With that, motion for your left.